Just being on your first. This will be the October 19th, 2016 City Council regular meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the October 19th, 2016 regular meeting of the Council of Satellite Beach at 7:00 PM. Will you please join me in a moment of silence and the pledge? And a pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. I'd like to invite a few people up while I read. Are you supposed to talk into the mic? I'm sorry. While I read a proclamation. Marie Whiting, she's the president of the Friends of the Satellite Beach Library. Please welcome. And Maria Gerlach, the vice president of Friends of the Satellite Beach Library. And Janice Marie, the director of our library. Thank you for being here, council. Okay, this is an official proclamation of the city of Satellite Beach. Whereas, the Friends of the Satellite Beach Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas, the work of the Friends highlight an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connecting with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of a well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our libraries get the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, reading, advisory, and children's services. And whereas, the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library, set an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive city engagement and the betterment of our community. Now, therefore, I, Frank Picatino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, to hereby proclaim October 16th through the 22nd, 2016, as National Friends of the Libraries Week. Please. Thank you so very much for everything you do. Great library. And before you go, Beth, I'm sending please send thank you with the Satellite Beach Women's Club has something for you.
Marie, I'd like to present you a check from the Satellite Beach Women's Club. We got started in 1964, and the library shortly after. Many of our members have been volunteers in the library and continue to be Friends of the Library. Thank you very much. And that is a telling that we have our meetings held at the library this year, the third Monday of every month.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Thank you.
So, thank you all very, very much. We appreciate your volunteer and your work for it. And if you remember where the library was originally?
Yes. I had no idea.
Thank you very much.
And we are having a fundraiser on the 29th. We have a yard sale.
What was that, a fundraiser on the 29th, you said?
Yes, we have a community yard sale at the library.
Okay. If you email that to me, we'll put it on our Facebook page, let everybody know about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the other ones we're going to mail. Thank you. Moving on to citizens' agenda item four, citizens' comments. The floor is open for citizens' comments. Here are none, close citizens. Back to the agenda, city council comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure I'll probably be one of many, but I'd just like to say thanks especially to the fire, police, Allen Public Works guys for everything they did during the hurricanes. I know that everybody's extremely busy, but it was nice to say that, you know, we saw our folks out, especially I, a couple of your guys actually live across the street from me, so I saw how many times they were up and down and out and quite often. I didn't hear quite as good remarks from a lot of the other cities, so I would say as far as that went, Satellite Beach excelled and shined as I thought they would, but many thanks to everybody that from the city that did such great work out there. Courtney, I read all the stuff on Facebook. I don't know how many times I must have heard people really appreciate the information that you were putting out. I know a lot of people kind of joked about the parrot question, would they accept the parrot at the pet, but you know, for people who needed that information, who had those type of questions, a lot of times you can't get those answers. And I think that was great on your behalf to take the questions and get the answers and get that out. I think one of the things as a council, we've always talked about, communication is a big item for us, and I think you excelled at that. Thank you for doing such a great job with that. It went over very, very well. Just a couple of notes to let you know is obviously I will be attending the advanced IEMO course next Friday and Saturday. They're actually having it up here in Cocoa Beach, so it'll be local for me to attend that. And also, I will be out of town November 13th through 18th, so that city council meeting that week, I will not be here. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mark?
All I'd like to do is just echo Steve's comments and say, Courtney, nice job to you and your team. It was, as you know, the mayor and I stayed, and we got to watch it firsthand, and it was first class, and can't say anything more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to add my own thanks to all of our employees for your preparations, starting with the city manager, to each department head, and to every worker in each department. And it isn't just our most visible two departments, police and fire, that went to herculean efforts to help us. It was all of the departments. It was the city clerk's office doing necessary behind-the-scenes administrative work. It was our building department, and it was our public works department, and they are getting the brunt of it now that the storm has passed. I see them out there cleaning up these huge piles of debris, and so you're all a very special group of people, and I thank you, and our residents, thank you, all of you. And that's we too.
Well, now that all the thunder has been stolen. You might not be done. You better be careful.
I also want to say a special thank you to the fire department, the firefighters who went out and helped residents put up their hurricane shutters. You have no idea what a gift that is to our residents who are not able to physically do that kind of work anymore, so God bless you and thank you for all of them. And also, I personally want to say thank you to our staff, members, who are taking the time to send me cards and letters wishing me well. It touches me from the bottom of my heart, and I thank you very much.
Well, reiterating, now that all the thunder has been stolen, because everything that needed to be said has been said, but I do want to personally thank you for, I can't tell you how many people have mentioned to me, you and Jeff driving around the city, and the live video streaming that you were doing, showing them their homes. It was just amazing, the number of people. I mean, I've heard from a lot of people over the years that I've been involved in our city, and I've never had as many comments on that as I've had on anything else. And I echo Lorraine's comments on all city staff, too. Public Works did a yeoman's job out there. Allen, your guys were tremendous, and they still are, because they're still doing it. And police and fire, that needs to, you know, goes without saying, you guys are always there. So, thank you very much, Don, and Bert, and your team, too. I will not be here on the first meeting of November, on the second. My wife's daughter is getting married, and will be in Nova Scotia. So, I'll be out of country.
Thank you. I'll make it quick, just, yes, Courtney, I'm gonna reiterate the same. The number of people that have contacted me or people when I walk the streets say, how you put 'em at ease, that short little, the videos, change their whole mindset coming back. As small as that, people look at your page, do a great job, it's a great information, and I can't tell you how many people that you've met in a tight, in a tough time when people anxieties are up, how that little thing come. To police, fire, and Allen, your public works, I had the opportunity to spend a few days with them. Amazing, and I'm really sorry they had to eat Brymer's food. We'll get that fixed, I'm for sure. But they're amazing. I told people that they showed up Thursday morning, they didn't go home until Sunday. City came first. And hats off to you guys, all of ya. Great job. Okay, any further, council? Okay, city managers report. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just going along that issue with the response to the hurricane, we have received many kudos from the community, we really appreciate that. I did want to just point out that in the preparation this year, we did, Suzanne worked pretty hard to get our beach accesses insured, which were not insured until we figured that out. And then, of course, we didn't have any damage on beach accesses this time, but we did get them insured, so that's a good thing. The other, you know, item is, we did learn this year that the, while the Facebook Live was great, it kept people from wanting to rush back and clog up the causeways, but what it did do is people realized that they could just stay at their hotels until their power is on. So, they were starting to ask, if you saw the Facebook page, is my power on? I'm sure would. Is it on? You know, so we're trying to now figure out a better way to report that with FPL, so we'll be coming back with, you know, those solutions once we get those figured out. Probably the biggest problem that we have right now is the waste debris pickup, and as you recall, we, waste management does not do storm debris pickup. In fact, it's a pretty specialized work type, and they don't have the trucks that are large enough to do that, and the number that we need to do that large of amount of debris pickup. And so, what the county does is, and we have it in a local agreement with the county, they hire special storm debris pickup people, contractors that specialize in that, that also specialize in weighing the debris, having monitors with them, so it qualifies for FEMA reimbursements. The issue that we're having now is that we're not the only community, like in Francis, we were the only community in the area that had this problem. Now, it's us, Fallujah County, Flagler County, Jacksonville, South Carolina, North Carolina, so it's not just our areas, so the resources are stretched pretty thin throughout these areas. However, we do, I have a problem with the way it's being done now, and a lot of it has to do with, it's my belief that the county's concentrating their resources in unincorporated area right now, and so we have called to complain about that, I don't know how many times now. And I did finally, I got ahold of Yuri, who's the solid waste director, and he has agreed to add trucks to the area. However, one of my problems with the way this is being done is the messaging, so in the previous, in the previous messages from the county, they were starting in Satellite Beach on Sunday, and then I tell people that, and then they don't show up on Sunday, and then they tell me, oh, no, we're going to be there on Monday, and then they don't show up on Monday, and then now it's Wednesday, and they still haven't made anywhere close to our city. So, I called Commissioner Smith about probably 45 minutes ago to talk to him about that, and said, you know, there are some streets here that are critical. Cassia is one of them, in that we have a car loop with Surfside, and in the morning, and at 2:30, it makes it difficult, we have no right-of-way on that road, and that the debris is in, literally, it's taking up the whole yards of the people that live on Cassia. And I know that there's individual problems like that everywhere, but Cassia has a big problem because of Surfside and that car loop in the morning and the afternoon. And then also, we have Sherwood, which becomes the Halloween destination of Beachside, and we need to get that cleaned before Halloween, so I called Commissioner Smith, and he said he will get that done for us. And then also, we have a commitment from the solid waste director to add trucks and get those to our community this week. So, it's been very difficult, very unhappy, I have to say, and we are talking with Indian Harbor Beach, Indian Leonik, and Cocoa Beach to see if we can create our own in a local agreement for the next storm. I also wanted to point out in the, on the October 5th city manager report, we did receive a thank you card from a resident who thanked Officer Tribell for helping when she had car trouble, and that was in your previous packet. The sports park controlled burn is going to occur in the next couple of months, it all depends on weather. I did ask them not to hold the public meeting, because it's holding us up, and we really need to get that burn done before the skate park renovations, so we don't hold up the skate park renovations. So, we're moving forward that, instead of the public meeting, what we'll do is create a, since it really is just an information meeting, since you've already made the decision to do the burn, what we'll do is create a very detailed letter on what that burn will entail, and where, and how it's going to be done, and answer all the questions that we got in the public meeting when we're here at City Hall, you know, where the animals run when the fire happens, stuff like that. So, we will ask them to create that letter, and that's what we will send out prior to the burn. In the next city manager report, I'm going through two of them. We have Halloween happening on October 23rd, which is the spook parade from Satellite Beach United Methodist Church to the teen zone. We also have November 5th, which is our Founder's Day Parade. So, we will, if you haven't gotten ahold of Cassia yet, to talk to her about how you're going to be participating in that parade, please, please do that. We are also, we have scheduled a special city council meeting on October 25th for the approval of the Florida Redevelopment Development Assistance Program grant application, so we just want to remind you all of that meeting. And again, we received so many thank yous for the Facebook pages, too, or on our Facebook page. I actually got thank you letters to me, which I never get, it's always to the police department or the fire department or public works. And I got cookies and a banana gift card.
Wow. So, when are you taking this out?
That always is, that always goes over to the fire department, so that was the first time. If I knew, all I had to do is Facebook Live videos, then I would have done them a long time ago. But, so, we are getting a lot of those, and we'll compile all of our kind of debriefing of the hurricane and what we're going to do next, and how we're going to change things. When we get a full report, we'll provide that to you.
Courtney, I'd like to add that you probably will get a few more people adding on to your Facebook page, because I know a lot of people had asked me, you know, about that, and I said, well, you know, city manager does this, and like, how do I know that? I said, well, if you get on her Facebook and like her Facebook page, you will see all this stuff. So, I don't know, I've talked to a couple dozen people who keep saying, well, I'm going to like your page to get that information.
I think I have up to 500, 5,700 likes now.
Yeah, I figured you were going to get a lot more.
Well, above the fire department.
Threw you right under the bus, Don.
I should pass him a long time ago, it's like, no. Well, don't ever say that, because he's pretty good, like, he'll, you know, relentless is probably a better word.
While we're on that, I want to throw out a suggestion. I don't know what the answer is, but it's a challenge to you.
Okay.
I've heard lots of wonderful things about how informative your Facebook page was, and how constantly you kept updating it, but there is still a large segment of our community that is not on Facebook, wouldn't be on Facebook if you paid them a large sum of money, and don't even know how to go there. And my challenge to you would be to try to figure out a way to keep that portion of our population informed, in addition to the instantaneous Facebook stuff that the younger people are readily attuned to.
And I think, you know, we've talked about it a lot. I think if we didn't have the BeachCaster, I'd probably use it more, but the BeachCaster is one of those ways. It's just that there is very few non-electronic ways to instantaneously give people information. But I have, I saw even Gabe Fine as a friend of mine on Facebook.
Well, I haven't talked to you, ma'am.
You got even to say.
Is it possible to have a blog on the website that you could be updating?
It is possible. I think it's probably impossible from a time standpoint right now, because that Facebook, during the hurricane, I was glued to that computer for 12 hours a day, every day, trying to get answers to all the questions that I got, and I don't even, there's some still that I just never even got to. And then I realized when people were asking kind of the same question, I'd put another post up, stuff like that, but it was a full-time job. There is no other way to do anything else. Maybe if things calm down, then I can do that, you know? Or if there's a way to create a blog, and then, you know, maybe just cut and paste the messaging, but you wouldn't be able to comment, so that's something we could probably look at, yeah.
We don't need comments, we just need.
There's the post, yeah.
When elected city's back on, that kind of stuff. We've got a real good assistant city manager.
And we got our new website coming through, too, so that might be helpful. Yeah, we might be able to just link it in.
Okay, good.
Okay. Also, we wanted to let you know that our mayor was nominated by the Marine Resources Council for the Maggie Bowman Award for Outstanding Service to the Indian Lagoon by an elected official. Commissioner Barfield actually won that award, but he was in the same league as Commissioner Barfield, and who's the other elected?
Doug.
Dot Altman, yes. And then also, John Fergus was also nominated for an award by the Marine Resources Council for his work on the lagoon as well.
Great.
There is a meeting on October 26th at FIT for the lagoon. It's being presented by the Political Action Committee. There's numerous presenters at that meeting, so it's not just Virginia, so if you are interested in that, let me know. You have to RSVP, I've already done that for the mayor, so if any of you all want to go, just let, we'll RSVP for you. We are moving the Sustainability Board meeting specifically so the board could go to that And I think that's all I have, except for Attorney Beadle now has an action item for you, under my report.
Mayor and council, there's been some general conversation about the pending litigation regarding the Gersh appeals, and basically, per statute, in order for there to be a conversation, a shade meeting conversation, I have to ask for advice of council under the statute regarding that, so that's what I'm doing on behalf of myself and special counsel that's handling the appeal on the right-of-way issue.
So, you're asking, Jim, if we want to have a shade meeting?
Correct.
Okay, that's not a may.
Sounds good.
Do I have a motion?
So, I won't be here on the second.
Okay.
Do I need to be here? Laura?
I think, I will update you afterward. It's just timing, if we wait.
Okay.
We have another hearing coming up on the 12th, December 12th, and so I need to be able to make decisions soon.
I'll vote twice.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Mayor Brymer. Do I have a second?
Do we need a motion for that?
Since it's an action item, I think we do.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second by Councilman Osmer. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this action item. Here are none, back to council, further council comments?
Nope.
Here are none, Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Petino?
Yes, motion passes. Look at your, November 2nd, at 5:00.
That's correct. I think it will take two hours, I'm going to, just to be safe. We don't want to rush it, so I would like to do it. And then also, on October 25th, for the special council meeting, we were hoping that we could do that with council at 6:30, because we did need to move our sustainability board meeting to that same date, and if they could start at 7:00, that would be great.
Okay.
You know how they go to 10:00 anyway, so.
I will be in Tampa.
Okay, that's okay.
You think of 25th, 26th, back on the 27th.
I'll email you the application and get your comments before the meeting. Okay.
Everybody else, excuse me, is everybody else good with the 25th?
Yes, 6:30. So, we said 6:30 on the 25th? Is that correct?
Good, Lorraine, good?
Yeah.
Okay. Courtney, thank you. Any?
Okay.
That's it? Any questions for some men? Moving on to Agenda Item 7, which will be postponed till the November 2nd meeting. And also, Agenda Item 8 will also be postponed to the November 2nd. Therefore, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 9, discuss, take action on ordinance 1128. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1128, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, updating the five-year schedule of capital improvements of the city's comprehensive plan as mandated by Florida Statute Section 163.3177 Sub 3 Sub B, providing conflicts clause, conflicts clause and severability clause, providing effective dates, first reading of the ordinance Number 1128.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance Number 1128, first read.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Brymer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion from council before I open up for the floor.
Ben Smith from LaRue Planning is here, in case you have any questions specific to the.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilman and mayor. Ben Smith, LaRue Planning, the item before you is a proposed ordinance to amend your capital improvements element of your comprehensive plan. The only changes would be an update of the actual capital improvement schedule of projects and your projected revenues, as well as several tables from the school board that are required to be in your capital improvement element as well. All of the capital improvement projects are items that deal with adopted level of service, water, sewer, drainage, and recreation, and they're all major items, so.
Yep, thank you very much. Questions from council to staff? This time, the floor is open for public comment on Agenda Item 9. Here are none, back to council. Any further council comments on it?
Did you say, I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's okay.
Because I heard the noise.
No, no problem. It's a wire loose.
Dot? Huh?
Councilwoman McGaw, you're up. We're voting.
Did you call my name?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Petino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Courtney, this microphone wire is loose under here. If I slightly touch it, that's making the noise, so I'm trying.
Yeah, that's like, usually mine does, but he put it up for me already, so I'll get you him to do the same.
Okay. All right. Any further? Moving on to Agenda Item 10, discuss, take action on an elevation appraisal letter regarding the comprehensive plan.
Did you want to do that, too?
This item is a, another, well, is a letter that you are sending to the state planning agency that basically says that your comprehensive plan meets all current legislation, meets all the requirements. Specifically, what they would be probably concerned with is the flood and peril items that were recently adopted by the legislature, and what we are contending is that all of your recent sea level rise and coastal management policies that you've adopted are consistent with that legislation, so.
Questions concerning this? So, we're pretty ahead of the game on a lot of this coastal stuff, as I'm reading after this hurricane and so forth.
Yeah, you know, back when, prior to the changes to the legislation, the ear process every seven years, ten years, seven years?
Seven.
Seven years struck fear in the hearts of every planning department across the state of Florida, because it was a very involved process. But now, if your comprehensive plan meets all the state requirements, you can send them a letter stating that and not have to do a full-blown ear, so.
Do we need to approve this letter for the mayor's signature?
Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilwoman McGaw, second by Vice Mayor Brymer, to approve the letter. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Here are none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGaw? Yes. Mayor Petino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much, yeah, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, discuss, take action on civic center renovation work order with Quentin Hampton and Associates.
Good evening.
Before you, tonight, is a request to authorize some design and planning work for the renovation of the Civic Center. Civic Center is pretty old, 1966, and we haven't touched anything since Harold left, I think, so, which is a while ago. The, the biggest issue over there is ADA compliance, and as you know, we have a lot of elderly folks that use that, that facility, you know, for bridge, and bingo, and, and things like that, so it's very important that, that ADA compliance is met for those reasons, and, and others, but mainly for, you know, to make sure that they can utilize those facilities the way they're, they're supposed to. So we talked to Quentin Hampton about, you know, doing some design work, phasing the work, so that it was affordable, and we wanted to make sure that the bathrooms, the restroom areas were first on the list, so I'll hear you answer any questions regarding the work order.
So Al, this is to design it in phases, is that what I'm hearing? Or just to do the ADA, the disability, the ADA part?
I think we're going to design the entire, it's going to design the entire facility, but we'll phase the construction so that the restrooms are, are first.
Right. That's what I thought we were going to do, because that place gets used incredibly. So my thing is, hopefully, when we look into this, the kitchen, everything is looked at over there, because.
Oh, yeah, we have big plans.
Good.
But, but honestly, from, from a facility use standpoint, it's really not used a lot, and, and that, that's the sad part, because it would be used a lot more if it had, you know, good restrooms. I mean, a lot of times, I'm over there, when, when people are there, and they say, can I just go use City Hall's? Because it's not just ADA compliance, it's just that they're, they're yucky. And, and then also, you know, just from a design standpoint, like, can we make it, you know, but more usable for different functions than just, you know, what it's being used for now?
Because I see the 55 and over club always in there using it, and the ones that we did the other night there at the forum. I mean, that, you know, meeting places, just in general, if you have a club or anything, and you try to find a meeting place around the county, or anyplace, it's pretty tough.
Our clubhouse has a long waiting list, so people will take that clubhouse over any facility, because it's nice. Here, you know, it's usually the last on the list, you know, okay, everything else is focused, you know, so, but it is big enough to take large assemblies, so, you know, city, our city meetings are usually held there because of the size.
And it, it's important to note as well that, you know, Courtney, when we talked, spoke with the architect and the engineer, she wanted to make sure that a lot of the features of the, of the building itself were preserved, so that we didn't lose the, the feel of, you know, Satellite Beach, the, the old Satellite Beach, the municipal complex that it is now, you know, just updating everything, but keeping some of those elements there, so it, you know, it still has a piece of old Satellite Beach.
The, the Scotty Coke Room there, or the old council chambers, that's where all the records are?
Mm-hmm.
Is that still going to be designed in that way, so that would be record-keeping back there, or?
We were looking at, and, and I think architects, once they get, like, to know where all the plumbing is and things like that, you know, where, could we move the bathrooms to maybe move the records over and take up less space? Because in this year, we have, you know, for the clerk's office, we have a temporary position scheduled for the sole purpose of beginning the process of electronic record making. So a lot of that stuff in there will not, will go away. And what we are planning to do is get air-conditioned, what are they called?
Minus plats?
No, the things that we're moving all the records into.
Oh, ductwork.
You know, the portable?
Oh, yeah, the portable.
The portable storage units, to move everything in, and it's not allowed to come back into the Civic Center until it's scanned. So that's pretty much the plan for this coming year. It's a lot of work, though.
You know, one of the things we have to look at in doing this is, you know, when we do the clubhouse, we're going to have people looking to be somewhere, and this is a perfect opportunity for us to get this where it needs to be, so that when that takes place, they've got a place to transition to, because there is a lot of stuff that happens at the clubhouse.
Really good point.
And, you know, it's a facility that we'll have to be able to offer to people to use in lieu of the clubhouse.
Right.
So, you know, it's, this is long overdue, but it's, you know, it's good that we're able to do this now.
Any other questions? I have one more, I don't know. So we have all the records there, so this building in general, once they're all scanned, are we going to have somewhere, and the reason I'm saying it, is it there, is it this side? Are we going to have a safe house? Where, where are you going to put all the stuff? Is it going to be on, you know, a computer or the cloud somewhere? Where are we going to keep the records, so that, where is the most safest spot? Do we need, do we have that? And if we don't have that, is that something when we're doing the design of here, this side, or that side, that we need to think about? You know, here is the place where you can turn it, if it floods, it's sealed.
Yeah, so like, all of our financial systems, and, and we're moving our records into the cloud, we're moving all of the city servers into the cloud, and all of those are backed up by Artemis to another area, so, so we have here, you know, we also have records that we can't destroy, so those we'll always have to keep, you know? But right now, even in the records room, we're not meeting today's standards for record storage, so.
I guess that was my point too, is we're going to have paper.
We've got it, it's not complying.
Yeah, we're going to have paper, probably always, a lot of the old stuff too, I'm sure, so.
And they have to be so many inches off the floor, stuff like that, and we're, we're not doing any of that right now.
But that's going to be part of this?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. Any further questions for, for public comment? This time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 11. Hearing none, back to council.
I'll move to authorize the City Manager to sign work order Number 2016-2 with Quentin Elhampton Associates.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman McGaw, second by, I'll take Councilman Osmer. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, and this time, I'll open up a public hearing, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance Number 1124. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1124, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Satellite Beach City Code, Chapter 50, Solid Waste, to reflect new solid waste contractor and new contract, deleting contract terms from ordinance, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date. It's the second reading of Ordinance Number 1124.
Make a motion to, make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1124 on second reading.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Discussion from council? Hearing none, this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 12. Hearing none, back to council, any further discussion? Suzanne, thank you very much, I know you worked really hard on this, good job, I appreciate it very much. Further? Okay, Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. This time, open up another public hearing, Discuss Take Action on Ordinance 1129. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1129, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Satellite Beach City Code, Chapter 28, Environment, by creating a new Article 8 entitled Environmental Protections, to include provisions prohibiting expanded polystyrene, pern, styrofoam, at city events and special events on city property for which the city is a sponsor, prohibiting the purchase of expanded polystyrene by city, creating Section 26-144, Purpose and Intent, Section 26-145, Definitions, Section 26-146, prohibiting the sale, use, and other activities regarding expanded polystyrene food services articles within the city, Section 26-147, prohibiting the purchase of expanded polystyrene by the city, providing for conflicts clause, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. It's the second reading of Ordinance Number 1129.
Move to adopt on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman McGaw, second by Councilman Osmer. Any further comments, it's a second reading from council? Hearing none, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 13. Hearing none, back to council. Courtney, have we, has anybody else called on this? Have we gotten any companies sending in anything anymore? Thank you. Further comment? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, is the agenda for the next council meeting? Hopefully, that's what it is, yes. If there's anything there you would like to see added, or any other comments, please Number 15 is Appointments to Boards, it will be in your original packet.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Ken Farson to the Board of Adjustment as a primary member, with a term ending 11/119.
Second. A motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Osmer. Discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item 16, Adoption of Minutes of the September 21st, excuse me, September 21st, 2016 Regular Meeting.
I'll move to adopt the minutes as submitted.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Osmer, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman McGaw?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.[1780.73]